Do that now?
Yes.
I am. Kenmore City Council is now in session. We are going to adjourn from executive session and no action is to be taken. And we're now in regular session. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Curtis?
Present.
Councilmember Danuski?
Here.
Councilmember Herbig?
Here.
Councilmembers Sperry?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Here.
Thank you.
If you will, all stand. Eric, would you lead us in the Pledge of Legions, please? That made your head snap.
(laughing).
Pledge of Legions to the life of United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. And if there are no changes and no comments, the agenda will stand approved as written. Next item on the agenda, citizen comments. It's an opportunity for you to express your views on issues that are important to you and to the community. We ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. And if the clerk will please call the first person. And we don't have a timer tonight. We do have a timer tonight.
Gareth Jeffers?
I'm back again. Mayor Baker, council members. The mayor asked me to give you a little bit of information about the Kenmore Senior Center, and I was able to come up with some numbers, which is what he had requested. So, we have submitted our request for an increase on our budget this year to $25,000 instead of $22,000, which has been for the last four years. As of the end of September, we had 3,142 people attending a Kenmore Senior Center function somewhere. Now, that could be a class, going on a trip, attending a special event, or, you know, participating, coming through the door. That's the people that, that's how many people we have served in this first, in the first three quarters of this year, in one capacity or another. Now, I will have to say, not all of those are Kenmore residents. A good many of them are, but we also get a lot of people from the outside area that come to Kenmore. And one of the things that I am proposing for myself, this is a goal for me for this next year, is to become more in tune, so to speak, with social media.[223.31][223.31](laughing). I'm trying to get Kenmore out there more, like, you know, on Facebook. And I know that there's an organization called the Kenmore Neighbors, and I'm trying to get into that. And I just found out today that there's a group up on the hill, on the Fin Hill area, that is starting the same type of community organization. And I'm going to try and see if I can slip into that so that we can keep everybody informed of what's happening at the Kenmore Senior Center. So, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, or you can call me at the Senior Center anytime.
Thank you, Ms. Jeffers.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Eric Adman?
Good evening. My comments actually pertain to the capital improvement ordinance, so I can, I'll just make them now, but I know there's a separate section on the agenda, public hearing to receive testimony. So, I don't know if you have a preference as to where I-
You can do both.
-make my remarks. Okay. So, I read through the agenda bill and the list of projects, and one thing came to mind as I was reading through them, which was that one of the various parks improvements that was listed, or one of the various parks that was covered in that section of the capital improvement budget is what's going to be known as Twin Springs Park, which is the former Kenmore portal site, which is a stone's throw from my house. And in looking at the capital improvement budget, what it looks like to me is that all that's proposed in the next six-year period is essentially a study of the park without any sort of really opening the park per se. And so, that puts it out till 2023 before anything is done with that park. And I recognize there's not a budget to make a lot of amenities at the park, like a rest rooms or anything like that, but I don't know if it would be possible to tweak the budget slightly, to put enough in just to add some trails and make the park somewhat kind of open for business for local residents, because there's a lot of housing that's going in in that area right now. And I know that that would be a real amenity to that section of the city. So, that's my comment with regard to the capital improvement budget would be if it's possible to essentially make that park open for use, even at just a passive level, that would be appreciated. And the other thing, I attended today, the open house. I was one of two people at the open house on integrating low-impact development principles and practices into the city's development-related codes. And I'm happy to see the city moving forward on that. I think that's excellent to see, some improvements in how our storm waters get managed locally. So, thanks very much.
There's no one else signed up?
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Ms. Jeffers, thank you very much for those numbers. I know the Senior Center, from my involvement there, deals with a lot of different people, and you've got a lot of people coming through that door. And I know we're very appreciative for the efforts you put forward to help out the senior community. Mr. Adman, there are a few of us on the council, a number of us on the council, the whole council that would love to see that park move forward. I know there's been some ideas expressed, and we hope that we can move forward as funding permits. So, thank you for your comments. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. This is a real short one today. So, if there are no objections, the consent agenda will stand approved.
Did you approve the whole agenda?
The whole consent agenda.
Did you do the agenda?
Yes, we did. Yes, we did. So, if there are no objections, the consent agenda stands approved. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing to receive public testimony on ordinance number 16-0430, 2017 to 2022 Capital Improvement Program for Surface Water, Parks, and Transportation. Ms. Gregory?
Good evening, Mayor Baker, council. Tonight, we have a picture right off the bat. And we are here to present the public hearing on the 2017-2022 Proposed Capital Improvement Program. You last reviewed and discussed the capital improvement program last Monday, October 17th. And tonight, we will go through it once again and provide an opportunity for public comment. There are three components to the capital improvement program. And over the six-year period, there are nine park projects included valued at $11,238,000, 10 transportation projects valued at just over $61 million, and seven surface water projects valued at $4.7 million. This list are, is the capital improvement, the park capital improvement projects, and I'll read those for the record. The Twin Springs interim use, Tolt Pipeline Trail Phase One, Morelands Park improvements, the Rhododendron Park waterfront and open space, Rhododendron Park float, Squires Landing float, Squires Landing waterfront and open space, the Log Boom Park waterfront access, and St. Edward Ballfields. Three of these projects, the Rhododendron Park waterfront, Squires Landing waterfront, and Log Boom Park waterfront, would be funded by the Walkways and Waterways Proposition One if that is approved by the voters in November. This chart just illustrates the six-year phasing of the projects and the associated resources used to fund those projects over the six-year period. Next, we have the 10 transportation capital improvement projects. The final payments on the SR522 West A project, SR522 West B, the sidewalk program, our overlay program, the West Sumamish Bridge, neighborhood traffic calming improvements, Juanita pedestrian and bicycle safety program, 68th Avenue pedestrian and bicycle safety program, the SR522 pedestrian crossing study, and the 61st Avenue survey and conceptual plan. And in the transportation capital improvement plan, the Juanita pedestrian and bicycle safety and the 68th Avenue pedestrian and bicycle safety programs are also included in the Walkways and Waterways Proposition One funding package. Again, here is the chart that shows the six-year phasing of the projects and the resources, the various grants and other resources that support those programs. Lastly, we have seven surface water improvement projects. The 190th Street Culvert at 61st. The Public Works Trust Fund loan repayment is associated with that program and assumes that we would receive a Public Works Trust Fund loan for that project. At this time, that's very uncertain, but if we were to receive that, the $765,000 is the amount of repayments we would make over the six-year period. The next project is Northeast 192nd Street Culvert replacement. There are the small works projects for which we allocate $100,000 a year, or I believe it's $50,000 a year. Strawberry Hills Southwest tank retrofit and infiltration filtration tank retrofit at 61st and 190th, drainage improvements 153rd and Arrowhead, and drainage improvements and street repair at 66th and 196th. Again, here is the six-year plan and funding package. As you know, remember, the six-year program includes, where the first two years of the six-year program impact the budget that we are embarking on at this point in time. So, the first two years, 17 and 18, if approved as presented, would contain park projects, transportation, surface water projects, and their appropriate capital improvement funds. And so, the impact for this coming biennium would include $4.5 million of park projects, $12 million of transportation projects, and $3.4 million of surface water projects. And on the right-hand side are the various funding sources for all of those projects That concludes my presentation for the public hearing. I'd be happy to take any comments or questions, and you may open the public hearing when the time is appropriate.
Councilmember Herbig?
I just had a quick question about Surface Water 29. With most, with almost all the projects on here, you know, the money is spent sequentially year to year with the, which one is it? The infiltration tank, 61st and 190th? There's $120,000 next year, and then $500,000 two years from that. Is there a reason why there's a gap in that project?
I believe it's due to design and then subsequent construction. Richard, our Surface Water Program Manager, is nodding his head that there would be some design included in this first biennium period, and then it would be ready for construction in the second biennium.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yeah, I had a kind of a clarification question on Twin Springs. It's in my understanding that that $40,000 is to open the park and do some kind of interim low-cost use that could very well be trails and things like that. Is that what we're understanding?
No, my understanding is that that $40,000 is going to be to hire a landscape architect to do some concepts and preliminary design work, and to work with the community to come up with an interim use, a kind of a low-cost interim use. So, we would spend 2017 asking the citizens what they'd like to do, kind of on an inexpensive level, like trails, or frisbee golf, or off-leash dog park, or something like that. And then, once we found out what, from the community, what they wanted, then we could figure out what it would cost, and then budget it, budget for that interim use.
Okay. I guess I'd like to, if there's any way we can get the park open in some fashion earlier than that, that would be great.
Councilmember Sperry?
Thank you. So, this capital improvement program assumes passage of the Walkways and Waterways bond measure. And of course, we don't know what's going to happen. So, if by, if it does not pass, then what would be the next step on our part?
Well, the Walkways and Waterways Proposition One affects five of the projects that we just saw, three of them in parks, and two in transportation. We would go back to the drawing board on those projects, look at our other resources, and create a new plan, if you will, amend the CIP accordingly, because we wouldn't be allocating that money. But we'd really have to relook at those projects and determine what Plan B would be.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes. Since we do have some unknowns, you know, we're obviously hopeful of the Proposition One passing, and also having some unknowns with P29 with the St. Ed Ballfield. And I think those are, until we have a lease, or we have an approval to work through, I think they're big enough unknowns. However, I also think if, you know, when we, maybe there's a way we can try to at least work through getting that process going sooner rather than later, as far as on the city level with Twin Springs, so we can, we can know what we're planning for and what we can try to do. But I would say, I'm comfortable with the way the CIP set out for the parks right now, especially since we have these, these kind of big unknowns that are, that we'll probably know a lot more in just a couple of months.
Thank you. Yes, yes, we will. And, you know, these numbers and these plans are dynamic. And as you said, in a couple of weeks, things could change dramatically. But even, even as we move into the early part of next year, and if the Twin Springs public process yields some, some suggestions, we amend the CIP every year, and we do a complete update every two years. So, we will take those factors into consideration and come back with perhaps a different funding package.
Councilmember Curtis?
Question on the trust fund. If that loan did not come through, would that be a big enough deal? We'd have to go back and redesign everything like if the bond didn't pass, or that would just, that particular project would just be put on hold?
The surface water project is not dependent upon the Proposition One. If we were talking about SWA-
Correct. I mean, the similarity I'm talking about is money didn't come.
Right. So, if the Public Works Trust Fund loan does not materialize, we're going to probably look closely at the Surface Water Fund itself. It has a pretty healthy fund balance, and we feel we may be able to do that project with our own funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. So, I declare the public hearing to receive public testimony on ordinance number 16-0430, 2017 to 22 Capital Improvement Program on Surface Water, Parks, and Transportation. Anybody, clerk, please call the first-
There's no one signed up.
Anybody wishing to be heard? Mr. Adman, please come forward, but sign up after you're done.
I appreciate the remarks from the council members in support of potentially opening the park at a earlier date and waiting two additional years. One other thing came to mind with regard to the Twin Springs Park, which is that I think that it has now come into possession of the city of Kenmore from King County. And I believe that there's some sort of an ongoing commitment to maintain the restored natural areas of the park. And so, I don't know if the budget, maybe that's not necessarily falling within the capital improvement budget, but I just would like to make sure that the city recognizes that commitment and that the budget also reflects keeping that going. Because I can, as I view the park, you can kind of see how that park could easily be overtaken by invasive plants and some of that restoration work undone in a, in a hurry if it's not kept after. So, thanks very much.
Thank you, Ms. Adman. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else wishing to be heard? Seeing and hearing nobody else coming forward, I declare the public hearing on ordinance number 16-0430 to be closed. I think that there, there's a question that all of us have on, on the maintenance side of things on that. And if I recall correctly, the county has got responsibility for two years.
More than that.
More than that, to make sure that it stays pretty much weed-free and invasive-
Yes.
-species-free.
Yep.
So, all right. So, if there's no more discussion on this, the chair will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 16-0430, the 2017-2022 Capital Improvement Projects. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Questions? Comments? Hearing none, seeing none. If the clerk will please take the roll.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Seven zero.
So, the ordinance is approved, seven zero.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, oh, it's our treat now. We've been all waiting with bated breath for this. City Manager's Budget Message, 2017 and 18 Preliminary Biennial Budget. City Manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, Finance Director Joanne Gregory and City Clerk Patty Safran are going to be handing out the preliminary biennial budget books to you. And I'll pause for a moment while-
Oh, thank you. Look at that. My buddy Hank's there. Of Hank.
Thank you.
Oh, that's a great cover picture. I love that. I love that.
Yeah, our own resident engineer Kent Vaughn has designed the cover.
Love it.
And I dare you to find another city whose budget book cover is as cool as ours. So, big thank you to Kent Vaughn for that design. And that design hits on a major theme of our next, of our next two-year budget, which is where's the fun? And so, I'd like to go ahead and read the biennial budget message, or at least a bunch of it. So, I hope you brought your blankies and are getting comfortable, because this is going to be a fun reading. Just picture yourself like when you were in elementary school and your teacher was reading you a story, maybe even in kindergarten, where you got to spread out on your blankies on the floor. I'm not suggesting you do that tonight, but maybe picture yourself doing that. I also want to thank my coworkers for their hard work in putting together this budget. We do this once every two years, and this is a really big effort. The priority-based budgeting effort all by itself is quite large and quite extensive by all my coworkers. Joanne Gregory has a big leadership role, is also, also a large workload role in building the budget. She's been putting in many weekends over the last few weeks and months, getting this ready for you. And as you can see, it's a pretty big document with a ton of information. So, the idea tonight is for me to go over the biennial budget message, but not to dive into it in detail tonight. We have multiple city council meetings planned between here and December 12th for you to dive into the details of the budget and get into discussion on what everything means, whether it aligns with your goals, whether resources are allocated to your satisfaction, et cetera. So, with that, I'll dive into the city manager's budget message. Honorable Mayor and City Council, we are thrilled to present the city of Kenmore Preliminary 2017-2018 Biennial Budget for your review and consideration. Once again, your leadership and clear direction have given us the guidance we need to draft a two-year budget that will provide the resources to make great progress in advancing toward the city's 20-year vision, achieving your goals, and improving quality of life in Kenmore. As an organization, we know that providing essential services such as law enforcement, safety for multiple transportation modes, and environmental protection are important and should be our first dollars invested in the budget, and they are. This budget proposes to continue to invest in basic vital services that set the foundation for a strong and healthy Kenmore. We also know that our job does not stop there. Cities like Kenmore can go beyond just being functional and providing basic public safety. Cities can play a role in prosperity and human flourishing. In other words, it's not just about preventing suffering and undue hardship, which is important. Our job is also about creating opportunities and clearing the path for our residents, businesses, and visitors to play, find fulfillment, and connect with each other as a community. This preliminary budget allocates resources and priorities to that end as well. To be on that path toward human flourishing, I believe our city organization and our community as a whole embrace a culture of continuous improvement, or what I like to call being on that upward trajectory of becoming. Especially for Kenmore, the way to make progress on that upward trajectory is through continuous improvement or relentless incrementalism. The overwhelming majority of our progress will be through the seemingly small, one-step-at-a-time improvements we make to our city. All of these incremental improvements add up over time to make a big difference. They involve both the software and the hardware of the community, and include examples that are in the budget message. We are excited to be involved in all the above and much more, and this budget lays out the plans and resources to do so. That said, the city's budget has finite resources, and while we have the wherewithal to accomplish a great deal, we are finding that our financial resources are staying relatively flat compared to the continuously, continuously rising costs of doing business. Later in this budget message, I will discuss this challenge, including how it impacts the budget and how to confront it. But before we go there, let's take a look at the highlights of the preliminary budget and how they relate to the city council's goals and the priority-based results we want to achieve. This budget is goal and priority-driven. The city council, as the elected representatives of the citizens of Kenmore, has adopted a major, a set of major goals, and those goals start on page four of the preliminary budget. And you're welcome to follow along with me, by the way, if you're not already. In addition to council goals, we based our budgeting on a broader set of criteria called priority-based budgeting results. Like council goals, these results were set by the city council early on in the budget process, and these results are all- process, and these results are also outlined in this budget message found on page five. In building the budget, we used priority-based budgeting methodology to score and prioritize all of our programs using the results here on page five. Our other guides in building the budget include council-adopted policies, such as the city's twenty-year vision and comprehensive plan, as well as more specific policies, such as the Target Zero Resolution for pedestrian and bicycle safety. Using the city council's goals, priority-based budgeting results, and other adopted policies to guide the way, the following budget discussion focuses on highlights for the upcoming biennium. As mentioned earlier, this budget continues to invest heavily in the city's core functions, including public safety, transportation, and parks. For example, we will continue to invest funds and leverage grants to preserve the pavement for our roads. We will continue to strive to meet or exceed the pavement condition score of eighty-two, or very good. The city's emphasis on public safety is realized through a high-quality police department and its officers. The city receives its police services from the King County Sheriff's Office, and through that contract with King County, the city is providing solid police coverage of at least two officers on duty twenty-four hours per day, seven days a week, and that's a minimum number, with additional police coverage often at peak times. We also have excellent mutual aid relationships with our neighboring jurisdictions. Traffic enforcement continues to be a top priority of our police department, including our recently-added motorcycle patrol, especially tailored to crosswalk enforcement, an emphasis on DUIs and speeding in general. Public safety includes more than police and criminal justice. Building and code requirements, infrastructure investments, and citizen outreach and education are also important to a safe community. This preliminary budget includes funding for all of these programs, including the Target Zero Community Outreach Program, which has been well-received by our schools and the community at large. Emphasis on pedestrian and bicycle safety. Pedestrian and bicycle safety continues to be a top priority, as demonstrated by the city council's number-one priority goal, to focus on and emphasize multimodal, multimodal transportation safety in the city of Kenmore with a specific focus on pedestrian, bicycle, and other means of travel. Travel. This goal includes implementing the sidewalk plan. When it comes to multimodal safety, this city puts its money where its mouth is. The recent completion of the West A segment of Bothell Way from sixty-first to sixty-fifth Avenue is a prime example. In addition, the cumulative decade-long investment of over eighty-five million dollars on all of Bothell Way in Kenmore further drives home the point that the city has made multimodal safety a very high priority for a very long time. Based on before-and-after data, the channelization improvements in new sidewalks have produced noticeable reductions in crashes. As a bonus, the aesthetic improvements, new landscape medians and sidewalks, as well as utility undergrounding, have beautified the highway. In addition to Bothell Way, there are numerous other multimodal safety improvements that the city has recently made, including a long list of neighborhood traffic calming improvements, new sidewalks on streets like one eighty-first, and more. This two-year budget builds upon this pedestrian and bicycle safety momentum. City Council Resolution Number fourteen dash two-three-five, adopting Target Zero Goal for No Pedestrian and Bicycle Deaths or Fatalities from Collisions with Motorized Vehicles, continues to provide a good vision for what we are trying to accomplish. Keeping this Target Zero Goal in mind, the main components of the two, the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen biennial budget's pedestrian bicycle safety initiative are as follows. We're looking at sidewalks and trail improvements, the toll trail improvements, new traffic calming circles and sidewalks on sixty-second Avenue between one eighty-first and one eighty-fifth, new sidewalks on two hundred and second Street from one hundred and nineteen, one hundred and ninety-eighth Street to sixty-sixth Avenue, several sidewalk gaps designed for sidewalks and buffered bike lanes on Wanita Drive and Sixty-Eighth Avenue from the city's southern boundary to the city's northern boundary, assuming passage of Proposition One. All of the above sidewalk and trail projects are funded in the capital improvement plan, also a part of this budget. The sidewalk sections are funded by a mixture of state and federal grants, real estate excise tax, transportation impact fees, surface water revenue, and, in the case of Wanita Drive and Sixty-Eighth Avenue, a voter-approved bond measure. In addition to the above sidewalk projects, this proposed budget includes the continuation of the traffic engineer position, as well as funding for more neighborhood traffic calming measures and other physical improvements for bicycle and pedestrian safety. Another component of our pedestrian bicycle safety is the education and outreach. The city manager's office will continue to lead the city's education and outreach effort, including getting into the schools and having a presence at events. Our Target Zero Outreach and Communication Strategy for Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety will continue to be implemented. Providing education, educational fun, and interactive learning experiences continues to be a key component of this Target Zero Program. On the enforcement side, our police department has and will continue to enforce traffic laws. The recent addition of the police motorcycle to the fleet provides another tool in crosswalk enforcement. Priority will continue to be on slowing vehicle speeds and pedestrian bicycle safety, and we have an overtime budget built into the police department budget for special traffic enforcement emphasis patrols. Moving on to council goal number two, economic development. As demonstrated in council goal number two, economic development continues to be a top priority for the city. This proposed budget continues to allocate resources to economic development efforts that revolve around implementing the city's adopted economic development strategy. These, the four goals of this strategy are: number one, promote Kenmore's image; number two, support existing businesses and expand employment; number three, create a multi-use, vibrant, and walkable town town; and number four, advance the community's connection to the waterfront. Various economic development initiatives and projects are underway and even nearing completion, including what was formerly known as Kenmore Village. The redevelopment of Kenmore Village has resulted in more than seventy million dollars of private sector investment into the core of our downtown. If you combine the private sector investments with the recent public sector investments of City Hall, the library, and the town square, more than one hundred million dollars is being invested in the bull's eye of our downtown, all within one block of the main intersection at City Hall. Other economic development initiatives are in place and making progress. A cohesive marketing and media relations strategy has brought positive exposure for Kenmore in business publications at the regional and even international levels. Over eight hundred Kenmore businesses are registered through the Kenmore Business Registration Program, and the accompanying Kenmore Business Directory is experiencing about three thousand online visits per month. The Kenmore Business Alliance, in partnership with the Greater Bothell Chamber, continues to meet regularly and will have, and we have a solid group of Kenmore businesses owners who form the backbone of this group. We continue to work with Bastille University and the Economic Development Council of Seattle King County on promoting a natural health hub in our area. The proposed economic development budget also includes funding for some new business recruitment efforts, especially given the opportunities for new employers as plans for Lake Point's commercial component develop. The Kenmore Business Incubator has been in operation for almost four years, if you can believe that, bringing new energy and jobs into the city. I am pleased to see the virtual incubator, as well as our business development courses, further support and help our existing local businesses be successful. The incubator program sends a message to the business community that the city wants to attract new jobs, that it rolls out the red carpet for startups, and that supporting existing businesses is important as well. This proposed budget continues to fund the incubator programs in the Strategic Opportunities Fund. Lake Point is the last undeveloped site of its kind on Lake Washington and has the potential to transform our downtown, provide new housing, office, and retail service options for our community, and produce unprecedented new public open space, waterfront access, and other recreational opportunities. Lake Point can be a true urban village right in the heart of our city. However, Lake Point is not without its challenges. How to mitigate traffic impacts and how to deal with the extraordinary costs associated with developing this unique site are chief among the project's challenges. We are in regular communications with a potential developer who has been investigating the site and could be coming in for permits or a development agreement in the next two years. Lake Point redevelopment will not happen overnight. Getting to groundbreaking could take five years or more. Once under construction, the project could phase in over ten years or more. That said, our man-on-the-moon goal set in two thousand thirteen is still achievable, to see the project under construction by the year two thousand twenty-three. Where's the fun? At the beginning of this budget message, I stated that to fully prosper and help citizens thrive, cities need to be more than just functional and safe. A functional and safe city provides the basic necessities: a police force, clean water, and an adequate transportation network. Safe and functional continues to be at our forefront, as evidenced by the strong public safety and multimodal safety investments in this budget. But in order to help our citizens and businesses thrive and be invested in our city and our quality of life, we need to go beyond just functional. We need to build what Happy City author Charles Montgomery calls emotional infrastructure, where tools such as urban design and great public spaces create opportunities for citizens to become emotionally tied to and have a sense of ownership in the community. In his two thousand eleven book, For the Love of Cities, Peter Kagayama takes it one step further and asserts that cities and their citizens actually need to have an emotional connection, or what he calls a love affair. Over the years, the city has been making strides in both focusing, focusing on and going beyond functional and safe, including major civic investments in the downtown, growing volunteerism and community participation, improving mobility for pedestrians and cyclists, sponsoring events such as concerts in the park and the Hydroplane Cup, providing more waterfront recreation opportunities, and adding new parks and park amenities. I believe we are headed in the right direction. I also believe there's a lot more to do. On this journey to happy, thriving, and not just functional city, we need to be smart about how we spend a city's limited dollars, but also how we tap into the vast human resources that reside right here in Kenmore. An example of uncovering this potential happened at the April two thousand fifteen For the Love of Kenmore event, where we asked ourselves, where's the fun? The resulting love notes from the community that spawned from the event were incredible and exceeded my expectations, and several of the resulting love notes are here in your budget message on page ten. For the Love of Kenmore's purpose was to send a strong message to the community that they can be co-creators and that they can have our permission, not that, not that they need it, and support to produce love notes by going after things like beauty, good design, art, connecting with each other, and yes, fun. As part of his teachings at the For the Love of Kenmore event, Peter Kagayama helped us, helped give us vocabulary, such as co-creators and love notes, to help the city and our citizens connect emotionally and ask ourselves, where's the fun? This proposed budget includes funding to bring Peter Kagayama back for another For the Love of Kenmore event in the spring of two thousand seventeen. At this event, Peter will give us a refresher course on loving our city, help us celebrate our successes and progress, and take us to that next level of empowering our citizens and taking Kenmore further upward on that trajectory of thriving and flourishing. To continue the For the Love of Kenmore momentum, we also plan to bring back the Why I Love Kenmore Downtown Block Party in the first half of both two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen with a new town square as party headquarters. We also plan on bringing the new town square and hangar building fully online in early two thousand seventeen. We are excited to have this key public amenity in the bull's eye of our downtown and as a year-round gathering space for the community. This budget includes plans for programming both indoor and the outdoor spaces, including summer movies on the town square. Speaking of our downtown, the city's downtown strategy, adopted way back in two thousand three, is still relevant and will continue to play a role in propelling us forward on this path to happy and thriving. Creating that true sense of downtown, that elusive sense of place where citizens can walk, gather, and interact, as well as meet their daily needs and have a strong sense of community, has been a central strategy ever since incorporation. The town square and hangar building are important pieces in the puzzle of creating a real downtown and a sense of downtown place for Kenmore. The town square and hangar building will be beautiful, and they will be an attraction in and of themselves. Discovery is an important design component. The town square will contain interesting amenities to surprise and delight the senses. These features include an interactive kinetic water feature, heated rocks, art, and other fun surprises. The hangar building will feature abundant glass to give it a lantern effect in the evening, and an inviting two-sided fireplace for warmth, coffee, and conversation in the chillier months of the year. A large bay door that will open up the building's western end of the town square is also included and will blur the line between the indoor and outdoor elements of the site. We have a business plan for the town square and hangar building. This plan includes maintaining and operating the site, providing programming and gathering opportunities for the community, and a retail tenant to help us activate the site and provide income for operating the site. Improving walkability and bikeability is also a central strategy for our downtown and getting us further along toward a true sense of place and thriving. New downtown sidewalk and trail enhancements are funded in this budget described earlier. The Kenmore Village developer, the Spencer Sixty-eight and Spencer Square developer, is being required to complete the new sidewalk connection on the west side of Sixty-eighth Avenue, connecting one eighty-first Street to northeast, one eighty-second Street. Bicycle amenities are being included in both the town square and in the mixed-use development next door. Long term, we should not give up on connecting our downtown with our waterfront and providing a less intimidating way for our pedestrians and bicyclists to get across Bothell Way. The Ad Hoc Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Committee's recommendation in two thousand fourteen to provide a pedestrian crossing over or under Bothell Way is still spot-on, and we need to allocate resources to finding the best method, location, and funding for a grade-separated crossing over Bothell Way. This biennial budget assumes grant funding for a crossing study and conceptual design. The ultimate location, design, timing, and additional funding needed to construct a Bothell Way crossing will hopefully materialize as the Lake Point project progresses. The widened pedestrian and bike path plan for the new southbound Sixty-eighth Avenue Bridge across the Sammamish River will be another important facility that will improve walkability and bikeability, especially as it relates to getting non-motorized users across the river and connecting the north and south halves of the city. This project is currently under design, and twenty million dollars in grant funding has been secured, thanks to Chris Overleas, our public works director and team. Lastly, the biennial budget assumes passage of Proposition One Walkways and Waterways ballot measure this November. If approved by the voters, Proposition One will improve north-south pedestrian and bicycle connectivity on the city's main north-south arterial. So now let's go on to the waterfront. As affirmed in council goal number two, a key component of a prosperous Kenmore is how we turn toward the lake and leverage this powerful asset. Our waterfront on beautiful Lake Washington is a precious resource that few cities have. During our Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan update in two thousand thirteen, and also throughout our Imagine Kenmore Community Outreach Initiative in two thousand fifteen and sixteen, we heard clearly from the public that public access to the water is one of their highest priorities. We have heard "get me to the water" repeatedly in our surveys, community meetings, and other forms of input. Kenmore can bring this vision of its citizens to fruition and become a waterfront destination in its own right, not just a place to launch or store your boat, a place where boaters and visitors intentionally go to tour and have fun. In other words, Kenmore can become known for its beautiful waterfront and the public access it provides. Over the last several years, we have seen progress toward that end, including the acquisition of a new waterfront property next to, and now an extension of, Squire's Landing Park and at the confluence of the Sammamish River at Swamp Creek. The Imagine Kenmore Initiative resulted in three waterfront projects proposed. The Imagine Kenmore Initiative resulted in three waterfront projects proposed in Proposition 1 Walkways and Waterways Bond Measure. If approved by the voters, this measure will fund just over $9 million of waterfront access and natural space, natural open space improvements at Log Boom, Rhododendron Park, and Squires Landing Park. By creatively and aggressively pursuing a course similar to what I have outlined above, we can, number one, respond to our citizens' repeated requests to get them to the water, and, number two, put Kenmore on the map as a water access and recreation destination. Another city council goal pertains to traffic congestion and how it affects local multimodal mobility. Our state and federal legislative agendas confront the cumulative impacts of state transportation decisions and inability of state highways to handle regional traffic and the resulting congestion on local roads in Kenmore. For example, we are asking, as mentioned earlier, for assistance for grade-separated crossing during north-south over Bothell Way. An improvement like this will be an incremental, though not insignificant, improvement in alleviating local congestion caused by the heavily traveled Bothell Way. With significant regional growth projected for the foreseeable future, automobile congestion on state highways, including Bothell Way through Kenmore, will continue and probably worsen. As a result, alternate modes of transportation is the name of the game from this point out, including dedicated through lanes for bus rapid transit. Over the last year, Kenmore, in participation and partnership with its neighboring cities, successfully advocated for bus rapid transit on the Bothell Way and 150th Street corridor to be included in this November Sound Transit 3 ballot measure package. If approved, bus rapid transit through Kenmore will connect the major I-405 BRT artery with a future light rail station at I-5 and 145th Street on the light rail spine and shoreline. This project will provide another choice to automobiles and should improve both speed and reliability on an ever-increasing corridor, ever-increasingly congested corridor. Okay, the budget picture. All the above highlights for the next biennium are significant. They'll propel us forward on that upward trajectory and improve the city's safety, economy, and quality of life. Yet these highlights are only a portion of what our city will accomplish in the next biennium. Daily operations, responding to 911 calls, investigating crimes, fixing potholes, issuing land use and building permits, inspecting new construction and work in the right-of-way, long-range planning, responding to code complaints, cleaning catch basins, mowing lawns, inspecting and maintaining surface water facilities, and managing contracts, and more, make up our basic operational services and are the bulk of what our budget funds. Funding these operational functions, combined with knowing what new investments to make in capital and economic development programs, have been at the core of building this budget. With key revenue and expenditure assumptions in place, we believe we have built a budget that achieves a strong balance of making new investments and keeping operational services fully funded. For historical context, the city's general fund revenues saw declines for several years during the Great Recession. The years 2007 and 2008 saw general fund revenues peak at $10.4 million for each of those two years. Then the general fund's total revenue declined thereafter, hitting the low point of $9.3 million in 2011. We have since seen modest increases each year thereafter, with sales tax and permit fees leading the way, and the new water and sewer utility franchise fee being implemented in the second half of 2013. Property tax, on the other hand, has seen relatively slow growth compared to the rising costs of doing business. Because of the state-imposed cap on property tax revenue growth, we are forecasting a 2.26% increase in 2017 and a 1.5% increase for this revenue, this property tax revenue, in 2018. And note that these increases include revenue from new construction. We are anticipating reductions in permit fee revenue and sales tax. We are not expecting the same level of new commercial construction activity to sustain this year's level of permit revenues. Similarly, sales from new construction, sales tax from new construction is expected to drop off because larger projects such as Spencer 16, 68, and the link at Spencer Square are not expected to continue much beyond early 2017. Here you see a couple of graphs illustrating the trends in some of our revenues. While we are anticipating relatively flat and even some declining revenues, we cannot say the same about expenditures. Ongoing programs with new positions or additions are experiencing cost increases that are outpacing revenues. I should say, let me restate that sentence. Ongoing programs with no new positions or additions are experiencing cost increases that are outpacing revenues. The largest example of this phenomenon is the public safety budget, comprising police, jail, court services, and consuming almost 50% of the general fund budget. The public safety budget is about $4.3 million per year and is expected to grow with no new positions or programs to $4.6 million in 2017. For comparison purposes, the city's property tax revenue is just over $4.5 million per year. As shown in the chart on page 16, the public safety budget is growing at a faster rate than property tax revenue. In 2011, public safety accounted for 87% of property tax, has grown to 95% of property tax in 2016, and is expected to reach 98% of property tax in the next biennium. When it comes to the public safety budget, we have little control over costs aside from cutting service levels. Police, jail, and court are provided to the city by contract with other agencies. These contracts contain cost allocation formulas and are based on the actual costs of providing the services. Cost increases in these contracts are also based on actual costs and are driven largely by increases in labor costs. The city has kept general fund operating expenditures lower than revenues, thereby keeping the fund balance healthy at more than 25% of the general fund's operating expenditures. That's higher than your established policy of 20%. Moving on to page 19, general fund balance and reserve funds. At the end of 2012, the general fund balance was a substantial $5.3 million, more than 50% of operating revenues. Our budget policy sets a minimum balance at 20%. The city took this opportunity to create a Strategic Opportunities Fund with a $2.5 million transfer from the general fund balance. And again, this was at the end of 2012. The purpose of this new Strategic Opportunities Fund, established in 2013, was to have resources available for key investments or to take advantage of strategic opportunities as they presented themselves. The general fund ending balance for 2016 is projected at $3.1 million, which exceeds the amended budget ending fund balance of $2.5 million by over $600,000. At the end of 2016, with the budgeted expenditures outlined previously, the Strategic Opportunities ending fund balance is expected to exceed $1.9 million. Also, after the end of 2016, I will likely recommend transferring general fund balance in excess of $2.5 million over to the Strategic Opportunities Fund. This transfer amount is to be determined after the end of 2016 and is therefore not included in this current budget proposal. The city also has continued to maintain a $1.2 million strategic reserve fund, not to be confused with the Strategic Opportunities Fund balance. Set aside for emergencies and rainy days, this strategic reserve fund is limited by growth in city assessed valuation, which declined during the recent recession. As a result, no transfers were made to this fund. If assessed valuation continues to increase over the next several years, the city may be able to add to this fund. Projecting forward to the end of the 2017-2018 biennium, with a combination of $3.3 million of reserves estimated for the general fund, $1.3 million in the Strategic Opportunities Fund, and $1.2 million in the Strategic Reserve Fund, the city will still have an ending fund balances reserves of $6.4 million. This next section, I'm not going to read it word for word, but it does talk about the six-year financial outlook. It talks about a particular home, my home, because it's hard to create the average home when it comes to property tax, and it compares it to growth in the local share of property tax, to the Seattle Consumer Price Index, and also median household income. Long story short, at least when it comes to my home, which is a pretty typical home in Kenmore, the local share of property tax paid is not keeping pace with CPI or household In conclusion, this preliminary budget proposal for 2017 and 2018 is a pleasure to present. We have many meaningful services and projects planned that will sustain and even boost our momentum on Kenmore's upward trajectory of becoming. Our budget is balanced, with resources in place to retain professional, high-caliber city staff to get the job done. Our focus continues to be on advancing the city council's goals, as well as the results identified in our priority-based budgeting process. Lastly, spending our first dollars on being safe and functional while also taking our community to happy and flourishing is what it's all about. I know we can continue to tap into and empower our citizen co-creators to produce lasting love notes that will connect us together, bring Kenmore that much closer to realizing its 20-year vision, and even get an answer to that quintessential question, "Where's
Thank you.
You're welcome. Like I said, a ton of work went into this on your part, my coworker's part. Joanne Gregory, as our Finance Director, has put countless hours into this, and we really look forward diving into the budget discussions with you in the coming weeks.
All right. Next item on the agenda, integrating low-impact development principles and best management practices into the city's development-related codes, rules, and standards. Ordinance number 16-0428. Mr. Sawyer, Surface Water Operations Manager, and Ms. Silverleas, the Public Works Director. This is our look at this, and we're going to have a public hearing on this on the 14th of November, so this is informational and time to ask questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, Council. That's correct. We're here this evening as a follow-up to our September meeting, and where we presented the first draft of the proposed code amendments. For this meeting, we've provided you the draft ordinance and the second draft of our proposed code amendments for your review, and we'll be accepting comments, questions this evening. And what went into that second draft? We've held two open house meetings for the public. We actually just held a third right before this meeting this evening, and had a couple more folks come in and have some comments. And the city attorney provided a pretty extensive review of that first draft, so a lot of his comments and questions were incorporated into the draft that you reviewed this week, as well as the Public Works Director provided some review and comments, and there's been more staff review. So in terms of this second draft, there weren't really any substantial changes. A lot of the city attorney's comments were grammatical and clarification-type changes. We've presented this to you in a way, hopefully that made sense. Basically, from the first draft, where we didn't have comments, questions, we've kind of accepted those changes, and then we've just presented and highlighted those changes since the first draft for the second draft for your review. So that's what you see highlighted and the strikeout and the additions and all that to make that clear for you. And as the mayor already mentioned, November 14th, we'll be holding a public hearing. There being presented this same draft that you see before you tonight. So we'll take your comments, questions from this evening's meeting, the comments we received from that public hearing on November 14th, and we will, staff will review those comments, integrate those into the last and final draft, and we'll be presenting that to you at a final meeting some point late November, early December. So with that, I'd like to open it up for any questions, comments?
Questions? Councilmember Sperry?
I guess this actually is more of a question. So I made it to page 27 of the 97, and you were describing what were pervious surfaces and impervious surfaces. And I read it, and I read it again, and I still am not sure what you guys are doing here. So not that I pretend to understand at all.
I'm sorry, I don't have the page numbers on mine. Can you give us the actual code section?
Sure, yeah. It's 13.32530, new impervious surface, and then it has a definition, and then the next one says new pervious. So obviously, I'm going with the assumption impervious means water can't go through it. And when I read it, it looked like, you know, things that you would expect. New impervious surface means the addition of hard or compacted surface, such as roofs, pavement, gravel, or dirt, and the addition of a more compacted surface, like paving over, and all that kind of stuff. But then, I thought this was kind of interesting that you said that the permeable pavement and vegetated roofs are considered new impervious surface for the purposes of determining whether thresholds for application of minimum requirements are exceeded in the Surface Water DM, I guess that's Design Manual, as are lawns, landscaping, sports fields, da-da-da-da-da. And so I guess what struck me about that was, I thought we were encouraging permeable pavement and vegetated roofs, and so I was kind of wondering why that would be calculated that way.
Sure. So the intent is that when someone comes in with an application and they're proposing these surfaces, such as green roofs and these permeable pavements, in terms of just what triggers a drainage review, so we know when they begin their application process, what our engineer is going to actually see and review, we want those to show up so that it actually triggers the drainage review, and we can actually take a look at their application and see what they're proposing. And then when it actually comes to what they have to do to develop the site, that's when they would get the credits for those permeable surfaces. So when it talks about for the purpose of triggering the drainage review, we'll look at all that, the square foot, because that's based on the square foot of what they're proposing. But then when we actually go model and give credits for what they're doing, that's when we would, for instance, look at a permeable asphalt or a green roof and model that, we wouldn't model that fully as an impervious area. We would give credit as, you know, model it as half impervious and half grass or something like that. So that would be, actually dictate like what kind of facility they would need to build, and that's when they would get that credit. But when they're actually just coming in and getting their permit, that's what that means, and we actually look at it all as impervious just so that we get that within our drainage review threshold. If that makes sense?
It does. It's, yeah. So there is still some benefit in terms of credit, if you will. It's just not in the initial part of the review.
Correct, yeah. And I forgot to introduce, but Alex Campbell's with HPL. He's a consultant helping us on this, so I don't know if Alex had anything to add to that.
Yeah, like Richard mentioned, I think what you're going to see is a certain ratio of pervious credit given to the pervious surfaces. So it's not going to be considered 100% pervious, but what you might see, for example, is 50% credit for these pervious surfaces, or pervious surfaces, excuse me.
Any other questions? Not hearing or seeing any. So you got what you need? Looks like you're on the right track.
Yep. So yeah, you will see us again on November 14th and at the public hearing.
Wonderful. One last shot. Thank you very much. All right. Next item on the agenda, staff report. Mr. City Manager.
I think I've done enough talking. The only thing I'd want to mention is Halloween at the Hall this coming Friday night. So feel free to dress up in your favorite costume. Should be a lot of fun, a lot of fun for kids in particular. I used that word again, "fun."
Fun? What time is that at City Hall?
I believe it's 6 o'clock. I believe it's 6 o'clock.
All right, comments, reports, initiatives. Councilmember Smith.
I'd like to just thank the city manager for his fine report, and I know it's a lot of work and it's appreciated. Nothing else to add.
Let's switch it up. Councilmember Danuski.
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Sperry.
Two things. Well, first of all, I do want to echo what Councilmember Smith said about our city manager and in terms of, and the whole staff for the budget. It's a huge, huge undertaking, and I so appreciate the time, Mr. City Manager, that you took to read your budget message. And I think it's such a critical, really a report on all that's been done and is planned, and it's, there's just something different when it's read and now it's obviously on the, citizens can access that, and it's just a really wonderful picture of all the good things. And yes, it was fun, so anyway. So my second thing is the Kenmore Library Advisory Board. We've had a couple of staff changes, not necessarily with the board, but I'll get to that. As you may remember, the whole King County library system has a new director, and that's been a little over a year, his first name is Gary. The other part that's new is the manager of this sort of cluster of libraries, which is Kirkland and Bothell, Lake Forest Park, and Kenmore, Karen Hardeman has retired, actually. So there's going to be a new person taking her role that we aren't sure of yet. One of the issues about the library board that's really been ongoing ever since the new library was built, because I don't know if you remember, but we were asked by the director at that time to form the library board, advisory board, and with the idea of advocating for the new library, and of course, it was very effective in terms of helping with some of the issues that came up during that time. And since when the new library opened, it was kind of like, now what? You know, now what? Now what do we do? And it's been kind of a hard thing. So, we are actually, the new director, Gary, and I apologize for not remembering his last name right now, is, they're having a Kenmore, not a Kenmore, a King County Library System Library Board, Advisory Board Forum, and it's going to be on November 1st. And so a couple members of the Kenmore Board, myself, are going to go, and I'm really hoping that, I guess what I'm hoping for is that the boards are going to be invited to participate in a new way, not just showing up, here we are, kind of thing. So I think that's a little bit of to be continued. The second part of the library board update is, we do have some openings. I don't know if you recall that Marilyn White did resign, and we've had the ongoing youth member, and we did have the potential, one of the potential youth members come to the meeting, and the funny part was, he said, "So what do you do?" And everybody just kind of went, and I thought, that is a problem, isn't it? You know, what do you do? So I don't know if we just need to have more fun. We did have snacks and we had a nice party, but, you know. So our current president of the library board has been emailing, working with Leslie. We've asked to advertise for new members, and the board doesn't meet again officially until January, so it's a to-be-continued. So I just mainly wanted to give you a brief update on some of the changes, and to be continued.
Councilmember Curtis.
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Herbig.
Nothing to add.
Deputy Mayor.
Just a reminder, keep December 2nd on your calendar for the ETP Tech Transportation Conference. Should be a good one. I'm also hope to go down to Tacoma for Washtot Conference the day before on innovations and partnerships in transportation. The two should be complementary kinds of conferences, so looking forward to both. That's all I have tonight.
All right, a couple of things. Leadership Summit, that was it last week, the Seattle Chamber, it was really a lot more, I think, interesting than what I imagined in that, I found out, the first thing, I sent everybody an email on it, about how we have this company from Korea that's coming here to bring 10 or 15 jobs in the area and whatever, and I think it's, it just shows, goes to show that our word is getting out there. We don't always see it, we're not always aware of it, but the fact, I think, that we are so supportive of staff and the council as a whole is so approachable that, you know, people are getting the word, so it's getting out there, and it's really, really nice to see. We spent time in breakout sessions, one of the breakout session I went to was on creating middle-income jobs. And, you know, in a city our size, any smaller city, that's really tough to do, but, you know, we talked about our incubator and stuff that we're doing to sort of grow our own businesses and try to promote from within. But one of the things that came up was keeping seniors in the workforce. I mean, there's going to be a huge deficit in number of employable people and number of jobs available as more and more of our workforce retires. I mean, we're well over 10,000 a day that are retiring, and there's going to be a shortfall of a few million people here in a few years. So, there's a lot of talent out there, there's a lot of people that would like to stay involved in the workforce, maybe not full-time, maybe job share, maybe another, a number of different opportunities, but it was one of the things that was brought up of how we might be able to create more in our cities. Also, I've got a meeting tomorrow with Councilmember Dombowski, and we're going to talk about human services in the North. And one of the things that I did last year while on the Harborview Board was to make sure that the University of Washington, who runs the medical clinics, has had and runs the hospital, has had that hospital basically rent-free. And so we established that as part of their responsibility for running the hospital for, and running the clinics is a $5 million contribution to the county, to, goes to clinics. So there is money that is going to be used to keep the clinics in the North and open. We're originally scheduled for closure because of a $54 million shortfall in public health spending in the state. So, that's good news. And just a reminder, there's a special meeting in the city council on November 7th and a special meeting and regular meeting on November 14th. And if there's no more business to come before us, City Manager, you're reaching for a microphone.
Just a reminder, we do need an executive session right after this.
For how long?
20 minutes.
Any action?
Possible.
All right. So, if nothing more is to come before us, we are going to adjourn the regular meeting and go into executive session for 20 minutes, and there may be action.
And it is litigation.
It is potential litigation.
And litigation.
And litigation.